Let me tell you, when we said we wanted to come to North Charleston, the first person I called was Congressman Clyburn, and he responded immediately. I signed the staff person and Reverend Robert Kennedy. Please give him a applause. So seventy-five percent of this is going to be hearing from you. I'm going to do the old Phil Donahue Act. So here's, understand it, I am never going to give up this mic. All restored, restored, I'm not giving up the mic. That's the first thing I learned in Phil Donahue. Do not give up the mic. So, but seventy-five percent is going to be you talking to your leadership, and your leadership responding, and keeping this dialogue over. It's actually a tale of two cities. What did North Charleston do that Baltimore should be doing right now? How is it that you prevented what's happening in Baltimore? So you're giving me two minutes, so I can, I can just say a lot in two minutes.
No, you don't have to, I'm going to get.
Oh, you got to, alright, so you take the last.
On behalf of Sirius XM, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And if you would please, to cut off your phones, we are recording live to air. We will be broadcasting this, I would like to not have any telephones going off during this very important broadcast. And we are about to get started right now with our town hall with Joe Anderson on Sirius XM.
I'm swan mail, bring shirt, three hands down, Craig Street. Audience, no one were two thousand feet, two twenty-three taking on the.
Two twenty-three, five shots fired, something down. You grab my table.
Minus five, two twenty-three, shot, fly, and you grabbed it, take, there's a president's name.
Let's get right to the breaking news. A white police officer in South Carolina is now being charged with murder in the shooting death of an unarmed African-American man. In a cellphone video obtained by The New York Times, North Charleston Police Officer Michael Slaver is seen firing eight shots at Walter Scott as he runs away from him. Scott was hit in the back, and he died.
What made you pick up your phone and start shooting on Saturday?
Well, when I saw that scene, I was walking to my job, you know, I see Mr. Scott, rest in peace, and I saw Lisa chasing him. I was on my phone call, and I decided, oh, there may see what was going on.
Was there a struggle?
There was, they were down before, they were down before, before, before the, um, I started recording, you know, they were down before. I remember the police had control of the situation. He had control of Scott, and Scott was trying just to get away from, from, from the chase.
You know, this situation with Walter Scott in South Carolina, I viewed that video with the same horror, but I'm sure everyone heard it. I was aghast at an execution that occurred without a trial in the streets of America. Have you actually managed to look at this video?
Couldn't finish looking at it when I saw my child. I know he's fifty, but he's my child. I saw him running like you would kill an animal. But I couldn't watch it anymore. It was too heartbreaking. I wouldn't want that to happen to anybody.
And that's the real story. Nobody wants this to happen to, uh, to any child. And as we are here in North Charleston at St. Peter's AME Church, right now, the city of Baltimore is burning. A city that, by the way, has a black police division, black mayor, a majority of black city council, and people are in the streets. So the first question that I would ask anyone, and you can raise your hand if you want to be first up here, is, is, we have a tale of two cities. So what did you do in North Charleston that they're not doing in Baltimore? Who wants to go first? Please, let's come up with this one step.
I got intro.
Well, we've arrested.
Hold on, you gotta get the mic together. I'll reach it.
I don't think the story is over yet here in Charleston, North Charleston, South Carolina. But right now, we have arrested the officer, but the story isn't over. We could be a Baltimore.
Hold on, respond to that. Alright, young man in the back. Your response to her? I hope.
Fair enough. Our response was to come out and to protest in front of North Charleston City Hall in demand of the Citizens Review Board. Our demands were clear, and we were not pacified. That's the difference. We have demands on the table, and we're marching on City Hall a week from now, four o'clock, marking the month anniversary of missing Walter Scott. The difference is that we have a community that has the leadership and the opportunity to actually set the standard of how we galvanize this energy into substantial social change that happens by calling our leaders accountable, and then having our leaders hold the city government accountable. We have clear demands. That is a very profound difference.
Alright, how many agree with what you just heard? Raise your hand, show of hands. Uh, let me go to, if I could, the gentleman who made this possible, and that is Congressman James Clyburn. We're in your district, a part of your district anyway, and I want to thank you for making all of this possible here. Young man made a very interesting, I think, a very profound statement. And it seems like, what I heard him say correctly, if I'm wrong, it seems that what happened was from the bottom up, as opposed, I don't want to put words in your mouth, as opposed to the top half. He's not. I mean, coming from a young man with Black Lives Matter, I think it was very profound. Would you agree or disagree with what you heard?
Well, absolutely, I do agree. First of all, let me thank you, Joe, Sharon, and your production. Thank you so much for coming to North Charleston. Let me just say, I do agree with that. I've said often that I believe in the difference, because I've been asked this many times, between North Charleston and even Ferguson, and now Baltimore. It's been the fact that this community, its leaders, the family, as well as others, responded in a way that no void was developed. Most of these things get out of hand when people go to their respective corners and yell at each other, and then somebody comes in to fill that void. That's not what happened here. The mayor, the actor, the family, the police chief, the local communities, went, presented their case, they were responded to, so no void was there. And I am so appreciative of the way this was handled here, until I can go throughout the country. I've been the first, and I suspect that I'll end up in Baltimore as well. I've also been up to Eric Garner's hometown. I've sat down with his mother and his sisters. And so I can tell you that people appreciate their leaders responding and not allowing forces, external forces. I think everybody knows. Some people came. There were people who came hoping the void was here, but they left because the void had been filled by local people, the local leaders, and this great Scott family.
You asked a question, wasn't it?
Do you give your name? That the first African-American woman would be sworn in as Attorney General in nine years. You know Washington better than any of us in this room. I would imagine that the President and the new Attorney General, they're probably cuddling right now. But what should be the federal response? But let me ask you from the legislative point of view. Is there, is there changes that have to be made legislatively? That, you know, because like, for example, in Ferguson, we saw the police officer not prosecuted federally because the bar is so high on civil rights charges. This is what the outgoing Attorney General told us. What changes or what are you proposing as a federal official should be made?
Well, I'm the co-sponsor. Maybe you've heard that John Conyers, African-American, in fact, John Conyers is VP of the United States House of Representatives, the longest-serving member. He's African-American, from Detroit. John Conyers has introduced, and I'm one of the co-sponsors of legislation, to once and for all bring an end to profiling. Not just racial profiling, but gay, community, women, all of these areas where you've seen profiling take place. That was introduced last week, and I think there's going to be a favorable response. You know, we've been trying to bring an end to racial profiling for a long, long time. That's the first reaction. A second reaction has been, legislation has been proposed to do what Senator Kempson is trying to do here at the state level, and that is to mandate, what we call body cameras. Now, that's not a panacea, as far as I'm concerned. I read it very clear, but that might be a step in the right direction. But we're on a thousand-mile journey here, and that's just one step.
And you have, now, with the legis, I'm over here. Do you have, I'm sorry, with the legislation being, being in Washington?
Let me put it this way. There is bipartisan talk. I'm waiting for some bipartisan wall.
Your name?
Slade from West Patrice. I don't think it's fair to compare Baltimore to Charleston in this situation because you have two different scenarios. You have a militarized police force there right now, and just like in Ferguson, you have a militarized police force. Here, I got to say, they were a bit smarter in how they handled this. But I think that they plan to draw out this until they hope that it goes away. And that's our, that's where we have to be, is we can't let this fade away. We have to be in the streets and show them that this is not going to fade away. We can be in the streets responsibly, but we can't let this fade away. We've got to be in the streets. And the only difference is, is the way the situation is handled and also the militarized police force. But I don't think it's fair to say that Baltimore was handled wrongly from an outside's perspective looking in. You have to be in Baltimore to know what happened in Baltimore.
Well, that's where we're going next, and you're right. And I think we should point out that no comparison is being made.
Well, I mean, there's, and I heard a piece of legislation that's been introduced by Congressman Hank Johnson of Atlanta, Georgia. This has been an issue with him for a long time, and that is to de-militarize police forces, starting, starting with making it illegal or taking away the program. There's a number on the program, and I'm a history major, and I always had problems with numbers. So I don't remember the number of the bill, but as a bill, was it?
Incident.
Ten thirty-three, that is to stop hanging out these PECs, these M-Rs, and all these military contributors to local police law enforcement.
Because it was the young man mentioned, before the next question here in the audience, young man mentioned staying in the streets, that how important it is, and he said, you know, and do it in a responsible manner. You've been very instrumental in pulling different groups together as a community activist, or a businesswoman in this community. Your response to, to what the young man said just a minute ago?
I totally agree with him. That's exactly what needs to happen. We cannot allow this to fade away, because if we do that, then the killings are going to continue. I also ask each and every one of you that's here, if you're not registered to vote, that's your voice. And, you know, we have someone here with 200 forms, 200 applications right now, so you have no excuse. And those of us that are registered to vote, we got to come out and vote. We come out singing home, and expect your voice to be heard, and then when the wrong people get in place, you're upset. You have no space to do that.
Well, we learned that in Ferguson. And I think they, I mentioned they increased their city council representation by African-Americans threefold. They just hired, fired and hired a new city manager. They got to hire a new chief of police, and that's what you're talking about. They now have the power and the control, and I think they have the judges also. You have a question, your name?
I want to respond. I'm sorry, sir, Larry Singletary, 50-year resident of North Charleston. The difference, I think, with Baltimore versus Charleston, you're right, rioting in Baltimore tonight. But if you can remember, the initial response by our leadership was not the same response that occurred after that video came out. The initial response, and I think people in Baltimore are frustrated as all blacks across the country, because the way that it's done, we know it's not right. The initial response from our leadership in terms of administration for the city of North Charleston was in support of office of slavery. However, when the video came out, it was so blatant. It was on six o'clock news, and we saw the killing. Then, then the administration came into fold, and the only thing they could do was to charge him with the crime for murder. But the initial thing was not, was not to give a checkmark off to our leadership or administration for the city of North Charleston, because initially, they were in support of slavery. But, you know, look at this question. I think the difference is the fact that because of the video, we know now that justice has to come. Baltimore is frustrated because there's so many things in the past, we don't get justice, and that's, that's.
Well, let me, but let me bring up this thing so many in the past. Look, you know, one of the things that we've been picking up, and I'll, I'll ask anyone from the panel to discuss this, is, is that this was not new. I mean, I've had people call the show from North Charleston and said it's Saturday night. You can be going down the main drag, and you're pulled over for this, or you're pulled over for that, but this is, this is not, not new. Like, I, I, you know, since we haven't heard from the state, let me take State Senator Gibson, so much, because I knew he's got some state legislative things, and it might address what he's talking about. So please, the name, I'll go to the back.
Let me thank you, Joe, and let me say to the young man that articulated the difference, the young man who just spoke, is the difference is the video. Cal up there is wearing a shirt, "Do you believe us now?" And if you look at the narrative across this country, it's the same narrative in the police officer's statements. The police officers write self-serving declarations. In other words, they, they tell the story from their view. And unfortunately, in a courtroom, greater weight is often afforded the police officer. Now, I know that there are some people, and I agree, body cameras aren't the total solution, but it's a start. And Representative Wendell Gilead, and I bow legislation requiring a mandate on all police officers to wear body cameras before the Walter Scott shooting. We held three Senate hearings. We barely had any community participate. It mainly was attended by law enforcement. But I'm pleased to say, in the state of South Carolina, if you want to pass legislation, you have to get bipartisan support.
So the question is, do you have bipartisan support?
We have bipartisan support, and it's on the second reading in the Senate floor.
Explain what that means.
It has to be read three times. The most substantive discussions occur on second reading. We can read it tomorrow, have a dial-in, and it can get to the House.
So we won't have to wait like Loretta Lynch did, right?
I'm not in Congress. I'm not in Congress.
You got control of this one, right?
And so we are doing what we can. But let me also say this, Joe. The, the, it's, the investigation still has not commenced with respect to Officer Hammerstein. And that is the second officer who, after reviewing his statement, let out material information, and the co-conspirative crime can just be as guilty as the person.
By applause, how many do you think that the, the officer's name?
Hammerstein.
Should be arrested? How many think he should be? And, okay, I'll get to that. Be honest, there are people, this is one of the great things about radio. You're holding up signs, radio signs, don't play the radio. Let me go over to the back there.
Oh, yes, good, good evening, my friend. A systematic process, not only in police departments, but in educational institutions, political institutions, is all designed for destruction of us as a people. So as interfaith communities, we must organize and galvanize for the need of empowering our people, not just to depend on the system to do for us what we're not willing to do for ourselves. We have to hold the mayor accountable, we have to hold the police department accountable, but we have to lock arms, look from within, to start teaching our babies. Start developing systems. If we have a problem with the police department, then why should we not organize in defense for ourselves to control our own community, to minimize the need of a police presence from within our community? Where our community now has become a sanctuary for crime, where it has been safe for drugs to be there. It has been safe for prostitution to be there. So when we look at law enforcement from a historical perspective, it's all about containment of crime within the black community, but they don't patrol downtown or the battery, like they patrol the east side, the west side, here, here. So what we have to do is to organize and say enough is enough. So we have to understand that if we get ourselves together, pool our resources, develop systems of education, develop systems of information, then we can have power from within, and we won't have a master-slave relationship, but we'll be masters dealing with another master in a balanced situation. This is what we have to do for our children, this is what we have to do for our people, empower them from within, that we can empower ourselves to overcome any force from without.
You know, she was talking, Mr. Mom, this goes back years in Washington, DC. We had a notorious apartment complex. They sold drugs in and out of that apartment, like the water company, the Grand Water. And it was the Nation of Islam, and the Church of Islam, that went in, organized, and stopped the drug sale. Absolutely stopped it cold. And so as you were talking, I thought about that. And that had to be maybe ten, fifteen years ago that that happened. So I wanted to say that because I don't want people to misinterpret or not understand what he was saying. You have the orange hats. We, we, you remember, you guys remember, orange hats. These used to be neighborhood people that would wear orange hats, and they'd control, am I right, Mrs. Frontman? Or they would control their own, their own communities. You don't see them anymore. But your name was mentioned, Reverend Johnson, and I just, of the National Action Network. Can I, let's move away from you. So I wanted to get your response to what you heard.
Well, as I mentioned the name, I would like for them to stand, because this is the face of Charleston that you've been fighting for over twenty-something years in this community. You got a lot of preachers down here on the front row. You don't see them, you don't hear nothing from them. Mrs. Dotstock, City of Charleston, NSCPT, saying, have a vision, which is saying, North Charleston, NSCPT, saying, these are the leaders in North Charleston have been fighting this, and, 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 brother Muhammad there, been fighting this discrimination and racism for over twenty-something years. So when we call for calm in the community, they happen. The people listen to what we have to say. Because we wanted to, before they react, we wanted them to wait until the investigation is over with. But we already knew the same day that there was a video out there, that there were a video, because there was certain lady in the pawn shop that there were a video that the young man had took.
Reverend, maybe, what was circulating in the pawn shop?
Guys in the pawn shop knew that the young man had already took in the video the same day it was shot, because it brought it to my attention, the young man was shot, it was brought to my attention that there was a video out there, with the dean team to me wanting to know the family's, the family's telephone number, in which I already had the community.
Speak to that, if you don't mind.
Sure, but the importance of Black Lives Matter is that we create an accountability mechanism that the community can use to understand where we need to go to get some stuff done. So the brother, baby Santana, contacted me that night, showed the video. In the morning, we found the family at the memorial, brought them in, they saw the video, and we got things moving. That's the level of accuracy and responsiveness that we need at a ground level. So as we're asking for Citizens Review Board, we're giving ourselves an accountability system that we have to have power with power. If we have subpoena power, we can ask an officer to be summoned to court to say, hey buddy, you've been messing around profiling, harassing folks in this community. Answer for that. If we didn't have that, that would have been over.
You want, you want a Citizens Review Board with, well, listen, with subpoena power? Because there are a lot of Citizens Review Board.
Yes, that's important to have, a Citizens Review Board with subpoena powers, because without the power, then what do you do? Who are we, the donor?
You're just a paper tiger. But let me ask, let me ask, State Senator, let me ask you, what would that take legislatively, public policy? How does one get that? It's one thing asking and demanding. I know you've got an election here, but how do you get it? How would they go, what would be the process?
I don't know. I haven't been asked that question, but I, I'm assuming it would have to start at the North Charleston city level. And so you have a number of city council representatives that you should start with, with that inquiry, because they should have the power to adopt local rules, policies, and ordinances.
Would it be a ballot?
Specific to, specific to the city of North Charleston.
Would it be, you think it would be a ballot measure? Would that be? Go ahead, Charles.
It'd be an ordinance.
An ordinance?
Yeah, the North Charleston city ordinance or Charleston city ordinance.
Yeah, a North Charleston City ordinance, or Charleston City ordinance. Now, I'll go say this. Um, I think the governor, a couple days ago, uh, called very forcefully for there to be state legislation to mandate anytime there's a police shooting, no matter where, that it's turned over to Slaver immediately. The problem we've got now, there are some police departments, and they're policing themselves on this question. And so I think that's another piece of legislation that we ought to be pushing.
Now, now, is there a councilman, Councilman Brown? Wait, wait. You never know who's listening to the Madison Show. You never know who shows up at the town hall meeting. We just got to talking about it. Where, where is it, Councilman, where? Well, please, stand up, sir. You, I just asked this question. How would they, one, I don't know what your position would be on it. Come on, out, out here to this. And, yeah, and, and so your response to this need for a, a citizens' review board with teeth, with, with, how would they go about it?
I think you've asked the right question. At the point, it has to be dialogue first, start off with. The next part, you said, is what is the legislation? Is it something to be held? You asked, uh...